Evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 11th, 2014, and it's nice that it's not dark outside and the spring has finally arrived. Let's record show the council is here except for Nancy Lodge who is excused. I'm glad that she's feeling so much better, so thank you Mike for being here. We have minutes in front of you tonight from February 11th to February 25th. Do they meet your okie doke-ness?
I move to approve the minutes as delivered in the packet.
Second. All favor six to five would say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Visitor and public comment. Does anybody want to make a visitor or a public comment at this point? I see no rush to the microphone, so I'm going to move promptly forward. The next thing, we have a proclamation on page 15 for National Red Cross, Marlon, and I think we have somebody from the Red Cross who's here to kind of keep us informed of what's going on today. So if you'd like to step up and introduce yourself and...
Yeah, I'm Daniel Webb. I'm a financial advisor, I'm a combat veteran, and most importantly tonight I'm a Red Cross volunteer. The Red Cross is comprised 98 percent volunteers and funded completely on the private donations. So the work that we do responding to anybody involved in a disaster, whether it's a single family home or a hurricane Katrina type event, is critical to enhancing the ability of people to recover from the effects of a major disaster. My appreciation for your support of our organization is tremendous and I came out here today just to thank you all for clearing a Red Cross month. Thank you.
I just want to, on behalf of the council, just want to let you know that I have a signed proclamation. Oh, sure.
Can I photo log?
Okay. I've been told we're taking a photo. Okay, Karen's going to take me a fish photo. Do you want to do it in front of the, here we go. Well, we move along promptly.
Alright.
Thank you. Thank you ladies and gentlemen for being here this evening. Thank you. Okay. I don't think I have any announcements that I need to make at this point. If I do, I'll remember them and get to them later. I think we have some city manager reports. Klein, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mayor's counsel. I will be keeping this one brief this evening. We've been sort of focused on mostly on one area of work and that's our effort to continue the recruiting of the police chief. We spent the last two days, as you may be aware, in various efforts, various elements of this recruitment process. Yesterday we had three community meetings, we had very nice gatherings at all three locations, interesting different kinds of crowds at all three locations. Frankly, I thought it was very successful. Got a lot of feedback from the community there and I got an opportunity to give all of that, so, and took that information in. Today we spent, we had five candidates, today we spent the entire day from eight to close to six o'clock with those candidates without break. So it was a very long day, but a very productive day. Surprised that Chief Mason was able to make it to the table here. Certainly it was a, put through a ringer along with the rest of the candidates, it was an interesting group. So we will be taking steps to move fairly quickly towards, I believe, towards making a initial offer on behalf of the citizens. The conditions will be completion of the background check and all the various other employment related checks that are required of a candidate. But I think we got to where I want to get to this moment now, I think we're getting very close to making an offer. So I want to keep everybody on edge of their seats, we're not quite there yet, I'm not sure when we get there. So that's the news on the police chief front. It's actually the first time I've visited, I skipped over it, I just included my manager report, which is next Monday, we will be, well, the tribal council here, we pass you together downstairs in the event center in between one and two o'clock on Monday. There's a little business for the evening, and I just welcome. We have a small gift that we were doing to keep up the tradition of the tribe. It's just a lead to the governments and I believe our development report will be put into, show it off over in the city and in our presentation, so everyone should see it here before. So it'll just be a nice opportunity just to meet and greet, no business again is contemplated. And we don't expect a very long sit down, just chat. So that's Monday, so I think you all confirm your availability with Karen, so just a reminder for today. We will be talking about independence station in executive session, so I won't interrogate further details in the public. A couple of pieces of information from the library museum, museum artifacts. Many of you may not realize that when we went through the major flood about a, over a year ago, it was almost two years.
Two years.
Two years ago, two years of that flood. It's kind of hard to track those hundred year floods that happen every year. The one that happened two years ago, we actually never did restore, return the artifacts to the basement of the museum until we completed our work down there and turned the basically flood proofing going forward. So we did a fair amount of work there with the help of FEMA. We also, FEMA also paid for storage of those artifacts offsite. And so they've been doing that every month for quite some time now. But we finally have returned those artifacts to the basement of the museum. Folks are very happy enough not to have to dig through an offsite trailer to find their merchandise goods. So that is taking place and everybody's happy and we think we're going to keep high and dry, really slow and dry. And finally, the library museum and Running Scissors had a very successful genealogy day on Saturday. That turned out very well, so that's my very slip report for the evening. If you have questions, happy to entertain those.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Ervai, we get to be the next person?
Good evening.
Good evening. So sometimes as the staff, we're always working on a lot of different projects and they always kind of get brought up in front of you here because it's usually kind of minutia, the projects evolve and change everything. So I just wanted to give, take a quick minute to bring you up to speed on a project that is evolving and growing and looking more promising. It's kind of one of these things that started somewhere else and eventually we kind of got to a point where we said, you know what, we should tell the council a little more about this, make sure they're all up to speed on this. You're aware of our youth learning construct program, also known as the sidewalk program, where we're working with Polk County, we have to have community, job growers and several other partners to help youth from our area, even their mutual education requirements. We put them together with an experienced contractor and get them working on the sidewalk repair and your local improvement projects, things like that, to basically, you know, it's a win-win, property owner's win, the youth get a good education. I actually just found out that this program, so the program's been going for several years in different variations and I just found out today that 72 percent of the youth who participate in the program have found employment within one month of finishing the program. So it's definitely a very successful program. This year, you know, we're, as always, we're looking to improve and expand and enhance the program. So we started talking with Howtac about other construction opportunities and we kind of settled on the poolhouse building at the defense pool. It's in very bad shape, as I'm sure you're all aware. It's really pretty much a tear down type of situation. And we said, well, would the youth learning construct program be able to tear this down and rebuild it? And Howtac kind of said, you know, normally we do houses, but they have a neighborhood revitalization initiative program, which is a little more of a, almost a promotional program where they do something that's not necessarily to a house, but has a neighborhood wide or an area wide impact. That's essentially a good publicity opportunity for Howtac while still impacting a little bit of families. We kind of said, hey, this is a perfect opportunity here. So we got started on that, and Karen, you want to bring up a couple of those pictures? They've got Architecture Furrow and Salem, so that's a pro bono work redesigning the new poolhouse. And it's, the idea would be to, it'd be a little bit bigger as you can see the shaded areas, the existing footprints, and you can kind of see the floor plan on that one, that's more of a site layout. If you can pump for the next one. Okay, so yeah, that would be the actual floor plan. So you can see the current, the current poolhouse is wood frame construction and it has one toilet and one shower on each side of the mental rooms. That's obviously not enough for the, you know, the use that it gets in the summertime. This new poolhouse would have actually five showers, including the AA shower and three toilets, including the AA room. So we have fully AA accessible, which would go along with the AA lift, which we installed in 2011, to basically pull pool fully accessible. It needs a lot more storage and office for light cars, this is the exterior review of it. We're kind of with the design, it's not quite reflective of this drawing, but what we're looking at doing is doing it out of a cement block construction. The idea would be to design this as a low maintenance, moisture resistant type of building because obviously there's going to be a lot of moisture in there and that's really the primary cause of the trouble that the current poolhouse is having is it just creates dry rock and messes everything up. So the idea would be block construction and all of the little, kind of the little lid of the thing along the top of the peak there would essentially be able to fence, so it would not be heated or cooled, it would just be essentially made to freeze in the winter time. You can just kind of drain all the water, shut it all down, it can freeze for probably winter time. Summertime would be naturally cool with airflow, which would also take away, you know, take away the moisture. So that's kind of where we're at now with this. The big truth with this now is going to be forming money together to actually build it. The youth learners construct program, it's, essentially the youth provide the labor, if the homeowner provides the cost of materials. With this particular building, especially if we're talking about block construction, the youth can't do all of it, they were made, you know, to be an actual mason, laying bricks and blocks and that type of thing is a pretty skilled pursuit, but they can still help carry the blocks and that type of thing. But still, we're looking at probably $212,000 to $30,000 of costs in order to get this done. We're approaching a couple of different combinations. I think with partnerships that we have and some of the other potential sources of funding in the area, we're cautiously optimistic we can pull this together. And we can, you know, this can be just a tremendous, tremendous amount of activity. So that's pretty much where we're at right now. We have ideas of people we can talk to and funding sources we can access. I would love to talk to you afterwards because we need to do this fast. The problem is, this would be perfect, you know, I'm totally confident we could do this if we were anything to build next year. Because this program is only funded for this year and it's, you know, probably will be funded again next year, but it might not, we pretty much have to try to jump on this opportunity now. So we need to raise this kind of money in probably a couple of months. But I'm confident we can take a strong ride down and I think we can do it. And if you have any ideas on it, happy to drop.
Questions for staff members? Go get them. Do you appreciate that? Okay, anything else from staff?
No, this time.
Okay, let's go to the unfinished business. I think you're carrying the funding request.
You have the Commerce Act as well, is it the Commerce Act?
Sorry, I'm reading the law. Yeah, we got, we got the...
There are not any on their agenda for the Commerce Act.
Oh. It's under new business. We have unfinished business.
I'm sorry, I'm skipping, my bad. I was looking for a place to hear you, but my apologies.
Under WIPAC funding?
Yep.
Okay. I would comment that I know that, you know, it wasn't just the candidates that were visiting today. I know that you were in all of those meetings, so, because I know a recint, it's been a long day for you also.
It has been a little bit, I mean, I'm on Wednesday. So this is on page 17 of your packet. And you probably knew that before I told you, but I'll share it anyway. If somebody else has some copy of that, okay. So if you'll recall, and I, and you have my staff report, but if you'll recall from our last council meeting, Mayor Obers was here making a request on behalf of WIPAC, he had a three-pronged request. One was in addition to the commitment we made this year to provide funding to support WIPAC was the addition of an additional $1,500 out of the current year budget. Based on the consensus that the board was showing, we went ahead and made that commitment and asked them to invoice for the, invoice this for those dollars that didn't require action of the council. That was under my authority. The second part of that request was a request to increase the PEC fee, the public information and government fee that we let them collect, these are being our franchise with Minnetonka. Who's the largest carrier of WIPAC, we made the only carrier of WIPAC up there on the United States channels. That PEC fee is out of our franchise agreement, would require renegotiation of that agreement. And I would suggest to you that, and I've sent a report, that if we proceed on that path, that we, that that be conditioned among of them to say, I think we want to have the same type of fee to all communities. I don't think it's anybody's interest to have disparate fees coming out of the two communities. Since WIPAC serves all communities large. So that is in fact part of my recommendation to you that if you give me direction, we'll pursue that course. And the final item of, the final item of Mayor, the final item of Mayor request for his rendition for the inclusion of $6,000 in the community budget in support of my operation, our WIPAC operations as well. Again, with your general consensus, we'll proceed in that direction with our budget presentation. At the budgetary, the first budget meeting will be in April, late April, not be included as part of that package. Again, I'm taking it, at least I took it from your last meeting, which I would like to see that consideration of budget. So absolute objection, that's all we'll do. So really what I'm asking tonight is if you'd like me to proceed in any fashion with an increase in the PEC fee or not, and at the stated amount, and whether to pursue that as well with our, with the city management.
Questions for the, for the manager? Go ahead.
At the last council meeting when Mayor Obers was speaking, I thought I heard two different figures that he put out. One was 85 cents per subscriber and one was a dollar per subscriber. Was he saying an increase of 85 up to a dollar?
That's I think, not my...
Yes, that's what I was hearing.
That's what I thought it meant, but I just wanted to clarify that because I heard him use those terms. I wasn't sure if you...
I need you to correct me.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? How you folks want to proceed, do you want to talk about this, what do you think? Comments? What would you like to do? I just think we make a motion that... If you'd like to. Yeah?
I move to approve the WIPAC request for PEC B adjustment, provided Monmouth does the same. And direct the city manager to include the budget request for $6,000 for WIPAC in the fiscal year 2015 budget.
I have a motion. Second. And I have a second from Diana, we're carrying. Discussion. Anybody have any thoughts, are we okay with this? Are we okay?
I know there was some discussion in the last meeting that after we put this up there, that at some point we can knock it back down. I think that we're talking about PEC B at that point. Let's not go there. We get ourselves in all kinds of trouble by promising people that they're taking speed away so badly. And I just think that's kind of unrealistic. We're putting it up there for a reason, you know, putting a reason to improve the system of use of this council.
It's interesting that you said that because when Mayor Obers was speaking, he was talking about the lifespan of the equipment.
Right.
And it seemed to me that about the time we want to be knocking it down, it's just about the time the equipment would have to be replaced.
It's amazing how that happens, it just happens on my car at home.
Yeah. Anything else, anybody else needs to say?
I would agree with Jerry that we need to leave the fees where they will land and keep them there. And I think the validation is that WIPAC is improving daily and as long as that improvement continues, there's no reason to change a consideration of fees.
Great, I think it's a good thing, I like the positive movement I've seen with WIPAC and 85 cents. I mean, the information that people are gathering, it's worth an extra 85 cents. And I, when I can't sleep, I watch the schoolwork. Good night. So, without any further discussion, all favor six to five would say aye. Aye and opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. We're going to move on to, we have some resolutions that we need to take care of. But I think, Sean, I think you get to do this one, or these two?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ervai's making his way to the podium. There is a Scrivener's error in the body of the resolution. There's two that does, that should not be there. So I will correct it.
We'll fix those, thank you for pointing those out. Okay, please.
Okay, so first off, we're talking about a resolution to apply for a local government grant. This would be for the Ball Field project, the open in town by Pope Grant. We are still pursuing various methods to finish that complex. And we actually got some pretty promising opportunities, I think, in conjunction with the development happening of the upper terrace and the National Guard. With this particular grant, we can use the value of the land as a match, providing we're able to appraisal, sure, appraisal of who's valued. So we'll be proposing, we'll need to apply for grants based on the value of this land, which we acquired previously. And in an essential grant, it's a fund for to finish essentially pieces that we're able to come up with via, working with the developer and National Guard. So likely we have something to do with the road and maybe some final pieces for our irrigation and goals and that type of thing. So that's what we're, plus we need to be a resolution supporting the application of this grant. And we have to ask any questions? There is any questions?
Questions? I have a question about, so if you're anticipating that if we can get that, this grant will cost the city variable to nothing completely?
Correct, yeah. This grant would essentially be, the way we write this grant would be, not what we ask for, would be indirect proportion to the match opportunity that we have with the value of the land. So whatever, whoever that appraisal comes back saying the land is worth, these grants require a 40% match. So we would essentially make sure that that number is, you know, no less than 40% of what we're asking for.
And do you have a ballpark estimate, I'm not a candidate, of what the ongoing cost of the maintenance cost and all of that sort of thing? Any idea what that's?
What that would be if it was completed?
Yeah, if it was completed.
Not off the top of my head, I have done some research into it, but I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry. We are having conversations, you know, off and on with various sports organizations and providers about if you're taking your own fields and operate in the field, I should say, once they're completed because we, the city, would rather not incur much in those operational costs. But we of course would want to be able to be public when it's not being used for terms or other type of formal events.
And the goal would be to find a part with take on the cost of operating the field?
Yeah, exactly, because there is, you know, there is money to be made from hosting tournaments, having the, that type of thing, you know, essentially renting fields for athletic use. And so you can essentially develop a fairly effective program of, you know, you may make sure your maintenance costs via those kind of tournament fees. So it's definitely feasible to do that.
Other questions? I think if you're, any topic applied to mine that makes sense, one of those things that makes sense. I think that's a good idea. Would I need somebody to suggest action, please?
The motion. I move to adopt a resolution number 14, Mayor 1374, authorizing the application for a local government grant for participation in our...
I have a motion second. Second, is there any discussion? All favor six to five would say aye. Aye and opposed, motion carries, thank you. And I think we're moving on to the next one, read Electronic Commerce Zone designation.
Yes, so this relates to $8,000 that the state's had for several years. I think there was a companion piece with my staff memo, that basically a printout from the state's webpage discussing the commerce zone. It stands for Electronic Commerce Zone. Essentially it's an additional designation that is overly on top of existing enterprise zones. So you're familiar with an enterprise zone, you get proper tax payments for three to five years or creating jobs. This would essentially add a new layer, there's some minor benefits in terms of eligibility for the enterprise zone, but the big benefit is a 25% income tax credit on capital expenses related to electronic commerce with that zone. And my understanding is that if a, an order fulfillment company where you essentially make an order online, Amazon.com, that type of thing, if they set up a warehouse here that's, you know, essentially serving with orders that are fulfilled, that could potentially be the seventh criteria. Other potential uses, of course, would be data centers, call centers and more obvious tech companies. But I think this really makes a great fit with Minnetonka's telecommunication capacity we have here. I've been wanting to do this for a long time, but the state had capped the number of available zones at 10 and that number has been filled at points in time. This current legislature approved an expansion by five zones, so there are now 13 zones. And it's going to take effect in 91 days after signing that. And so I would have our application on there, that's waiting for when it's going to begin to effect. And so we have to ask the regulation, have to do all of these own sponsors. So I've already talked to Dallas, which will be considering this on Monday, working with Polk County and the community, talking to Monmouth as well. And so far, it seems very interesting and exciting about it.
Questions? I'm, go ahead. I'm going to add that I really want to do a shout out for our city manager and a number of elected officials. We all put in communication with our legislators, encouraging them to support this. And if I recall correctly, with the unanimous vote, that's what it is. But it took some shouting to make sure that everybody fully understood that this was an opportunity for us, for the whole region, and usually WIPAC is, Minnetonka is an economic driver. So I want to thank all, everybody who's involved in this, thank you very much.
I think it's a great idea, I was just curious, do you know where the other 10 zones are?
It's mostly the big cities, Salem actually has one, Bedford, I believe Ben does. There's a couple of smaller ones.
Think Eugene Springfield has one?
No, well, yes and no, because they were the driving force behind the expansion, actually.
Yes, but...
So I think there is one in that area, but I'm not sure exactly where. And so it's, those are the ones I can remember offhand. But if you can read through the list and kind of go, okay, 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 the usual suspects.
We have to remind people, we are, I know Mayor Obers and I, and I know the city staff are helping remind people that we are a huge, big city and one of only nine in the United States. Portland's been making noise about wanting to be one and we've been one for a while, so, anyway. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, also in this resolution, the correct nomenclature of the zone is the independent, this is the Dallas Independence Monument and Plaza.
Thank you. If someone would make a suggestion, act, suggestion, action, we could move it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 14-1375 requesting that the Monmouth Independence Dallas Enterprise Zone designated for Electronic Commerce.
And I heartily so.
I have a motion second, further discussion. All favor six to five would say aye. Aye and opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Johnson, I think you get the next one on the water code. Going to dampen our spirit? Sorry. A little run water there. Excuse me, I'll keep my distance.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. Just to sum up...
Just to summarize the memoirs contained in the council packet, city staff would like to amend the code to make it very transparent that water base rate is something that is applied to all users here regardless of their water usage. Currently, that's not been the case, if someone is out of their, their home for a significant time of the year, for instance, maybe they're gone for six months, they pay nothing. However, there are certain costs that continue whether or not you are home, such as debt on our water service, maintenance of the pipelines, repair and replacement of the pipelines, things like that, that have nothing to do with the making of the water. And so, this ordinance would ensure that, correction, the ordinance would ensure that we could continue to charge the base rate, which is what that contains.
Questions for staff? Go ahead.
It does mention that there's a, a survey that was done of other communities, do we have any...
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that survey with me yet, I did contact City Department today to find out, and it's my understanding that they do have a base rate that is applied, even when that wasn't...
I can tell you from my experience, I've never seen a community that doesn't charge a continuing base rate for services, because that covers the fixed costs of operations, as opposed to the consumptive rate, which rightfully varies depending on whether you're, whether you're resident or not. That's the whole point of the base rate.
So, how many, how many residences are we talking, or connections are we talking about right now? That?
That would affect?
Yeah.
I would hesitate to guess at this point, but it would not be a large percentage?
Well, I believe this is, this is current practice, this is just basically memorializing current practice that we have, I think it was, I think it was captured on our part, that that wasn't implied in the water code, the way it is in the people's...
Yeah, and our city attorney did make note that she felt that we, it, it wasn't in the code enough, but that this makes it a lot more clear and transparent, I think.
So, it's almost a health keeping...
It is, yes.
Questions? Questions for staff? Okay, since this is an ordinance, if someone would like to do the ordinance dance? I think, oh, Carrie's been so kind of include the motions on the page, so that makes my easier, okay.
I move to the proposed ordinance, council bill dash two zero one four dash four, the rule is in the text, being contained in the council packet of the first...
Motion, second, second discussion, all in favor, six to five, say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance amending IMC Chapter thirty-four Utilities, Article three Water Service Systems, Section thirty-four dash one twenty-seven, and Article four Sewer Service Use Regulations, Section thirty-four dash three twelve, and stating an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill two thousand and fourteen dash three four, the second type, by...
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, six to five, say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance amending IMC Chapter thirty-four Utilities, Article three Water Service Systems, Section thirty-four dash one twenty-seven, and Article four Sewer Service Use Regulations, Section thirty-four dash three twelve, and stating an effective date.
Okay, the last one?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill two zero one four dash zero four.
Second, have a motion, second, any discussion, is everybody okay with this? All in favor, six to five, say aye. And opposed, motion carries.
The ordinance will be assigned number one five two eight.
Is there any other business that we have to do before we go to executive session? I do anticipate that we, we may have, I, I expect action after the executive session, so you can hang out if you want to, or whichever way you want to go, that's... The Independence City Council will not meet the executive session for the purpose of confirming with legal counsel, considering legal rights and duties regarding current litigation, litigation likely to be filed with executive session, pursuant to ORS one nine two six six oh two E. Immediately following this, the council will meet the executive session for the purpose of negotiating real property transactions, pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six oh two E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to record any deliberations during the executive session, except to say that the general subject of the session previously announced, no decisions will be made in the executive session. This time, the council adjourned the conference room for the duration of both executive sessions, but both executive sessions are in term of return to the session in the council chambers. Any decisions from either executive session will be deliberated at that time. We're going to go to the executive session, so we're headed back to the back. Okay? Come back! Okay, Mr. Klein, if you have anything you wanted to say relative to real estate actions?
Just that you have in your packet a demand to the existing real estate contract, a second demand to the existing real estate contract for the ultimate purchase of the old city hall at two forty Monmouth Street. The terms have changed somewhat from the initial terms, it's the same purchase price, however, this has changed the closing date to September second, two thousand and fourteen. The late night closing, however, increased the number, the, the interim deposits, or actually broke up the deposits into three non-refundable pieces, as opposed to what had been refundable deposits previously. They will occur at roughly forty-five day intervals, they have been, the title company has already been notified, they are to be replaced once deposited, so that will occur if, as long as the contract is, the performance is good on the contract. The contract has already been signed by myself and by Miss Presser, acting for to be worthy LLC, and it's just awaits your ratification to then to complete the transaction, and I has recommended that you do so.
Additional questions for staff? Without questions, would request a motion for action?
I move to ratify the second amendment to the contract for the purchase of the former city hall, and authorize the city manager to execute the document on the city's behalf.
I have a motion, second, discussion. Here, no discussion, all in favor, six to five, say aye. And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Is there any other business we need to transact this evening?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, six to five, say aye. Thank you, we're done.